Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June 18th, 2020 Board of Education meeting. At this time, I ask for motion to open our meeting.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Thank you. Please join me and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight is a very exciting evening, but before we begin, I just would like to take a moment on behalf of the Board of Education to thank the community for the continued faith and trust and confidence in this board in passing the budget. This board has worked diligently over the years, especially this year, in passing a budget that was equitable and fair for all residents, while also keeping our students and their programs in mind. So, thank you very much to the community. And I would like to also extend the congratulations to the new board trustees-elect, Mr. Ben Delillo and Mr. Tanner McCracken, and to the reelection of trustee Michael Simone. So, congratulations to all three of you, and I wish you all the best as you move forward to the next year. So, congratulations to all of you and to the community. Thank you very much. We really do appreciate it. And Mayo Pack is a great community to live and work. And I'm very proud to have been served as president. At this time, we're going to begin our meeting. So, I will turn it over to the superintendent and we will get the evening started.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It's my great honor that I introduce our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Ms. Deborah Logato, who will begin to interview, to have our principals talk about our tenure candidates for tonight. Deborah, over to you. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. So, thank you. Thank you, Anthony. And welcome to 2020 Tenure Night. It's always a very special event. And even though this year where it can't be in person, it's such an important night for some incredible staff members. So, I'm really honored to be part of it. We have nine staff members that are being recommended for tenure this evening, and three more will be recognizing for achieving this milestone in their career this year earlier. So, principals will be joining us to tell us a little bit about these dynamic professionals who'll be watching this with their families through the livestream. So, it's a little different of a tenure night, but I think it'll be nice. So, we're going to start the presentation by inviting Principal Brian Gilligan from Austin Road, and he will talk about our very first tenure candidate.
He's joining.
He's joining.
He's still joining. Here he is.
There he is. Hi, Brian.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. You have one tenure candidate this evening that I know you want to speak about, so.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you to Mr. DeCarlo, President of Mayacuso and Board of Trustees. It is my honor tonight to talk about Katie Duma, a fourth-grade teacher at Austin Road. If I was to come up with one word to encapsulate Katie, it's growth. In her time here at Mayo Pack, she has grown tremendously, and I think that's one of the biggest compliments you can give to any professional, but even more so to a teacher. She has taken advantage of every opportunity here professionally, development-wise in Mayo Pack in her time, through innovation, technology, and literacy. She's been part of the TC reading pilot group, and she's done phenomenal work in her time in working with that. She's worked with Robin Ambrosi, who is another candidate that'll be tenure tonight from Lakeview. And together, they've been able to plan out a fourth-grade curriculum and be the only two teachers who did it within the pilot. So, that next year, when our fourth-grade teachers across the district come on, they will have a planning set for them. And it's been through their hard work that they've been able to develop that. Through technology, she's been able to attend workshops within Google, Flipgrid, Pallet. And she's always on the cutting edge of taking that and being able to try it out in her classroom. And innovation-wise, even though she wasn't part of the Breakthrough Cohort One, she wanted to jump on board. And she was reaching out to teachers who were part of the, part of that team and was able to, from their learning and being able to talk with them, be able to take and transition that philosophy and work into her classroom. So, she's been amazing in being able to reach out and to continue her learning. And it's come throughout her teaching. I always look forward to being able to visit her classroom because all that I have mentioned above comes out through her teaching. I can walk into her room and be able to see mass stations. Earlier this year, I was able to see her publishing a piece of writing and be able to develop it into a newscast, which the kids were able then to be able to record and be able to watch into her classroom. The same love she has for learning, she's developed into her students as well. She's been able to develop an amazing community within her classroom that allows for the collaboration and for kids to be able to work together. And as I go around and talk to students about their learning, they're able to speak about it. But more importantly, they speak about it with a passion. And that's because of the way she's been able to engage her students into authentic learning. And it's truly always a pleasure to be able to visit her room. As part of her staff, she's been able to infuse herself seamlessly. She's a key member to our fourth-grade team, and they work tremendously together. And from day one, she's been someone that's been able to offer, and they've used her as a resource. So, it's truly, we are lucky to be able to have Katie here in our district. Certainly lucky to be able to have her here at Austin Road. She's such a dedicated, innovative, and hard-working teacher. And it is my honor tonight to recommend Katie Duma for tenure.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
So, hang on. Just stick around. We're going to, we're going to invite Jen now.
Okay.
Our next principal of Lakeview, Jen Pontillo. Hi, Jen. Good evening. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well. Nice to see everybody. Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent DeCarlo, President Mayacuso, and all the trustees. Recognizing the talent of exceptional educators at a Board of Ed meeting is always a highlight of my role as a building principal, albeit remotely this year. I am thrilled to speak tonight on behalf of two exceptional teachers who joined Mayo Pack after both beginning their careers for the New York City Department of Education. Robin Ambrosi, who currently teaches fourth grade at Lakeview, came to us with a strong pedagogical skillset that has only improved over her time with us. Robin has a natural thirst for continuous growth and takes advantage of our many TTT courses and book talk offerings. She immediately implements new strategies, methods, and technological applications if she thinks they will improve the quality of instruction she provides for her students. She pushes them to be the best versions of themselves, quite like she pushes herself. These past few months while in distance learning have been a perfect example of her work ethic. If you saw Robin's classroom at Lakeview, then saw her Google classroom, you would be amazed at how easily she picked up right where she left off on March 13th. Her expectations from day one of distance learning were extremely high. Her students saw her face and heard her voice multiple times every day. She then held them accountable for completing their work and held herself accountable for adjusting her expectations based on feedback from her students and parents. I can say with confidence that Robin's students are extremely well-prepared for fifth grade, thanks to the hard work, countless hours, and slightly perfectionist style of Robin Ambrosi. Using her experience as a literacy coach in the Bronx, along with being one of our TC pilot teachers with Katie Duma, what a dynamic duo they have been. And no, Brian, you can't have Robin. Robin will lead our fourth-grade team in its full implementation of the units of study during the 21-22 school year. I very much look forward to this leadership role for Robin, and am confident she will lead her team successfully. Beyond the classroom, Robin is a member of our PBIS team, the District-wide Writing Committee, and is part of the Breakthrough Cohort of Teachers. Robin works collaboratively with her colleagues in all buildings and enjoys the opportunity to learn and grow with others. The Mayo Pack Central School District and Lakeview Elementary School specifically are very fortunate to have Robin Ambrosi as an educator, colleague, learner, and leader. I look forward to many more years of learning from and alongside Robin. It is my honor and privilege to recommend Robin Ambrosi for tenure this evening.
Thank you.
Every once in a while, you get to hire someone with great potential, who I like to call the diamond in the rough, and watch them exceed your expectations right before your eyes. Christina Giansante is one of those teachers. Christina was hired as an ENL teacher here at Lakeview, due to our growing L-population. She quickly emerged herself as part of our ENL team and began building relationships with classroom teachers. In short order, Christina's skillset was realized, and classroom teachers embraced her expertise and welcomed her into their classrooms to support students. Where along that continuum, Christina was not only seen as a student-support teacher, but as a teacher-support teacher. She began co-teaching lessons in classrooms, running stations, providing Chrome support, and teaching TTT courses of her own. Ms. Giansante has not only committed herself as an ENL teacher at Lakeview, but to the greater Mayo Pack. She teaches JV field hockey and varsity softball. She filled the lead position as our Building Technology Leader, served on our site-based leadership team, is also a member of our PBIS team, is a member of the District Technology Committee, having both her Level 1 and Level 2 Google certification, as well as being part of the Breakthrough Classroom. Christina is extremely reliable. I know I could call her and ask for assistance with just about anything, and she would say, "Of course. What do you need? How can I help?" I don't know how many people know, but during the COVID pandemic, Christina and her friends set out on a mission to feed as many healthcare workers as possible to show their gratitude. Thanks to the many people who donated this cost, Christina was able to feed 2,915 workers in 23 different hospitals for 36 straight days. I know this has nothing to do with her role as an ENL teacher at Lakeview, but it is a perfect illustration of how giving, selfless, and special my diamond-in-the-rust Christina is. It is my honor and privilege to recommend Christina Giansante for tenure this evening.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much, Jen. Yep, stick around. We're going to invite a principal of Mayo Pack High School, Matt Lawrence, Dr. Matt Lawrence, to speak on behalf. I mean, he has quite a few tenure candidates up this evening. So, as soon as Matt can join us, he's connecting.
Am I on? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Matt. We can't see you, though.
Let me see. Oh, wait.
Video. There you go. There he is. Hi there. How are you?
I'm good. Hi, Deb.
Good evening. Welcome. So, you're, you're on.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. DeCarlo, Ms. Mayacuso, or trustees. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm glad to be able to do this in this way for our tenure candidates. So, tonight, we're, we're recognizing a bunch of individuals to be recommended for tenure. I'm happy to start off with a couple that were given tenure earlier in the year. Dr. Eva Hecht. Dr. Eva Hecht, for the entirety of my principalship at MHS, has taken on the coordination of the MHS Academy program. Dr. Hecht has been instrumental in recent developments in the academy program, such as the implementation of student performance database to track effectiveness of programming based on multiple variables of education. Eva is the center of all activity and decisions made at the academy and students and programs. Although Eva is not an administrator or a supervisor, she is very much considered by most to be the centralizing factor of our academy program. Of the many, many accolades I could read off to you about Eva, there are just a few that I'd like to share. Eva participates in every single one of, of our student intakes in district and out of district. Eva is a constant presence at our Mental Health Awareness Weeks, a presence at our extended school year. And Eva is, is very much instrumental in organizing meetings to introduce personnel from other districts who wish to come and tour our academy program. So, with this, I'm, I'm very happy to again recognize Eva for her previously granted tenure. We all clap.
Thank you.
It is strange. It is.
It's very odd. Yeah.
I know.
Again, I have a previously granted tenure of Jason Conklin. Jason is a TA who, throughout the entirety of my principalship at Mayo Pack, has been assigned to the academy. In reading the, the comments in Jason's recommended for tenure, we see that Mr. Conklin successfully engages with humor, friendly sports and competitions, and commitment and fervor. He has grown over the years in his ability to design, implement, monitor behavioral interventions for optimal success. He is a definite asset and a student ally for our students in the academy and all of our students. Jason brings a smile and a sense of humor to MHS every day. So, again, congratulations to tenure on, to Jason on his previously granted tenure. And on to those being recommended for, for tonight. First, I have Jennifer Steitzer. Jen Steitzer is a school social worker, currently works with the west side of the, of the main office with the latter half of the alphabet. In all of Jen's observations, she continually scored highly effective in all observations. Comments of note from administrators that have observed Jen. Ms. Steitzer is proactive in providing guidance and, and advice to students and families, and is comprehensive in her knowledge and application of outside agencies. Areas of strength for Ms. Steitzer is her level of involvement with students beyond her immediate role as school social worker. Ms. Steitzer has implemented various new initiatives at MHS among a wide array of students. Ms. Steitzer has demonstrated her ability to work with students during some of their most difficult times of their lives. She is excellent at de-escalating students in an effort to get the students in the appropriate state of mind to have a meaningful conversation. It has been observed and noted that the students under Ms. Steitzer's care have a tremendous amount of trust and respect for her as they know she has their best interest at heart. And again, I have pages of, of things, accolades and programs that Ms. Steitzer has implemented and, and participated in. I'll name a few. Ms. Steitzer brought about and continues to, to develop the Sandy Hook Say Something Coordinator. She meets every year with, with groups of students and provides training along the Sandy Hook Say Something program. Ms. Steitzer is a continued presence on the MHS Crisis Team and continually provides insights into, into how to handle crisis situations. Ms. Steitzer has volunteered to be part of our site-based team. Each year of my, my, my principalship at Mayo Pack, she has been the most co-advisor for the freshman class and the most co-advisor for the sophomore class. Ms. Steitzer is most definitely integrated into not only the specific aspects of her job, but dedicates herself to the extracurricular life of our students. So, with this, I'm very, very happy to recommend Jen Steitzer for tenure. Next, I have Mr. Dominic DiMatio. In all of Dominic's observations, with all administrators, Dominic has received highly effective ratings. He, each year, he has received a highly effective APPR rating as well. Mr. DiMatio makes a conscious effort to engage his students in each class, in each lesson throughout, throughout the, throughout the course of the day. Mr. DiMatio came to MHS already a very strong teacher and an advocate for students. And he continues to grow and influence those around him to be the very best they can be. Aside from his impact and growth as a teacher, I deeply appreciate Dominic's vision and leadership he is providing among our staff and specifically within the PE department. Mr. DiMatio works tirelessly for our student athletes as he continually strengthens our athletic council. Dominic comes to us with a wealth of experience of other programs and is ready and willing to bring his experience to help us continually make our program better. Again, a very long list of contributions for Dominic, but Dominic is very influential, obviously, in his role as the varsity head, the head varsity football coach and running the Mayo Pack Football Program. In addition to that, Dominic runs the Mayo Pack High School Fitness Center. He is an honorary board member and active participant of the Mayo Pack Football Touchdown Club. He's an honorary board member and active participant and offers free coaching clinics through the Mayo Pack Sports Association for Football. Dominic is the, the club advisor for the Mayo Pack Student Athletic Council. And Dominic is also a member of the Putnam County Community That Cares Coalition. So, again, with this report, I'm very, very happy and pleased to recommend Dominic DiMatio for tenure. And finally, I have Mr. Christopher Ford. Chris Ford is a Spanish teacher at Mayo Pack High School. Mr. Ford's instructional observations dating back to October of 2017 have demonstrated a solid lesson planning, student-centered applications, and language skills, and various methods of assessments. All observations since 2017 have been rated in the overall effective and highly effective range with the overall composite scores of highly effective. Mr. Ford came to MHS as a teacher with a healthy instructional experience and competence. Since his first year at MHS, Mr. Ford has embraced our preferred instructional methods, which are student-centered in nature, primarily focused on high levels of student-to-student engagement. Mr. Ford is open to learning instructional techniques which foster this instruction and readily implements new ideas in his classroom. Mr. Ford's classroom environment reflects one of a teacher who understands the important, the importance of student engagement and problem solving. Again, Mr. Ford is highly involved in all aspects, not only of, of, in his department and his field, but in extracurricular activities of our students, to name a few. Mr. Ford got trained, received training through the New York State Language Teachers Conference, and then returned to Mayo Pack High School and turnkeyed this training for the World Language Department. When called upon to teach Dutchess County Community classes, Mr. Ford applied to DCC as an adjunct professor, was, was granted this adjunct professorship with DCC, so he is able to offer college classes at Mayo Pack High School. Mr. Ford is very, very active with our, with our teachers, teaching teachers program. And he takes on extracurricular activities, as well as he is the Spanish club co-advisor. He's also a coach of the modified girls soccer program and a JV soccer coach. So, with all of these excellent contributions to Mayo Pack High School, I am very happy and proud to recommend Mr. Christopher Ford for tenure this year. And I believe I've, I've covered everybody.
I think you have. So, thank you so much, Dr. Lawrence. Please stick around. We have one more final, certainly not last, but Principal Cosacria from our middle school has four tenure candidates he'd be speaking about this evening.
Thank you.
He's joining.
There he is. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, President Mayacuso, Board of Trustees, Superintendent DeCarlo, and district administrators. Thank you for having me here this evening to speak about our tenure candidates. The school is fortunate enough to have four candidates this evening that are up for tenure. The first is Andrea DePrile, who is our Italian teacher. Because of Andrea and, and her time here over the last three years, we've been able to grow our World Language Department a great deal. Previously, it was a one-year program only for eighth grade. Through Andrea's help and her dedication to our students, it is now a two-year program. And many of our students go into high school with a World Language credit. And that's really due because of the hard work that Andrea puts in and has been able to grow that program. She's built, also built strong relationships with all of our students and staff. Her approaches to curriculum are innovative and allow her to incorporate technology into the classroom, which has been really, really important, especially over these last four months. Anytime you walk into her classroom, she is always using some type of technology and, and able to engage the students in a variety of different ways. In her short time here at the middle school, she's become a leader amongst her peers, often offering plenty of advice. Andrea came to us with quite a bit of experience already from Rockland County, and she has been really instrumental in helping others in her department and throughout the school. And she's always, always the first person to volunteer. I could send anything out that we need a volunteer to help with our students in any, anything. And she is the first email that I would get back saying I'd be, I'd be happy to do it. Some of the activities, and these are activities both inside the classroom and outside the classroom. It's things that she volunteers to do over the weekends. Some of these include site base, the Career Fair, coordinating fundraisers for the Relay for Life, and organizing Mayo Pack Middle School's first Carnival event this year, which was really successful. I think that Andrea will continue to grow this program, continue to grow our World Language program. And we often see many students now that are looking to sign up for Italian. And that is due in large part or all part due to Andrea and the relationships she's, she's built with our students. It's my honor this evening to recommend Andrea DePrile for tenure with Mayo Pack Schools. So. All right. The second candidate I'd like to discuss is Jackie Tome. She is one of our school psychologists. She is, who is also always responsive to teachers and administrators when she's needed for our students that are in crisis. The hardest part I find with Jackie is getting a chance to talk with her. It seems that every time I go into her office or want to talk to her, she's in there with students, whether she's working with individual students, whether she's working with groups of students. She's constantly engaging our students, working with them, talking to them, going, going to her office and, and finding students in there. going, going to her office and and finding students in there in in a group setting and having really important discussions, discussions that'll help them to grow. She's also brought quite a bit of mindfulness to our school that she offers to our students and she's also given effective P D to our to our staff on my mindfulness. I often like to say that Jackie is the best combination of a school psychologist with also a social worker mindset to her, always thinking about the students' mindfulness and how they can grow. She's positive in every way with her students and always enthusiastic. She keeps the students engaged, which is some tough work at times, but she has her methods and is able to keep them engaged. She's not only built relationships with students, but also with those families and reaching out to families, having conversations, discussing with them mindful mindfulness and ways to work with their children as well. She due to her dedicated work ethic, we've seen many of our students blossom into fine young men and women that are prepared to succeed when they move on from us and head up to the high school. She's willing to volunteer for anything. Another person that comes through, anything that you ask of Jackie, she is prepared to do, wants to do, and just always asking, how can I help some more? It's my honor to recommend Jackie Tome for tenure with the Mayapac School District. And now our third candidate is Martin Rodriguez, who also is helping to grow our middle school World Language Program. Martin is one of the most enthusiastic teachers that you're going to find. He makes time for his students, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. I often see him speaking with his his students after school, in the hallway and giving up and and even inviting them in during their lunch, his lunch period when they're having difficulty with anything. He has volunteered to be part of many activities outside of the classroom, including coaching soccer and track along with going to dances, the middle school game show, craft fair, steam fair and the musical. He is always willing to give up, whether it's his weekends, his late nights and come in and work with our students. We've seen such growth over our last couple of years in the World Language Department. So many of our students now going up and having a credit already in World Language, which is a really big thing to be that far ahead. And it's due in part, in a big part due to Martin. I know Martin is going to have a long career here at Mayapac Middle School and he will continue to grow and a big part in our students succeeding. So I'd also like to recommend Martin Rodriguez for tenure at the Mayapac School District. And finally, I have one of our teaching assistants who was a previous tenure candidate and is now a tenured, but wanted to acknowledge him and his tenure. Yeah, and that's this is last, but certainly not the least. He's worked closely with many of our students that need the most support. Brian implements strategies to allow our students to succeed. He seeks out ways to grow and techniques that will help our students, both talking to teachers, talking to clinicians. And due to his dedication to our students and building relationships a long way, we've seen these students that Brian works with prepare for high school and be social members of the middle school community. He's a role model for our students and his gentle and patient. I think anyone that would meet Brian, those are the two words that I would use to describe him best, is gentle and patient. And that approach builds trust in our students and to take chances that they ordinarily wouldn't take. So I'm honored again that you have decided for Brian Appleburg to be granted tenure. So those are my four candidates that I think are going to be great, great teachers, great T As for the Mayapac School for many years to come.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Principal. So since our honorees are really not here tonight, I mean, at least they're not here in person with us. I do want to, on their behalf, thank our principals for all their kind words, their leadership, their contribution to the success of these staff members. I always say it is one of the most important things you do. So thank you and certainly congratulations to all of our twenty twenty tenure recipients.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Legato. And on behalf of myself and I know the Board of Education, you know, tenure is a significant accomplishment in the career of an educator and I want to congratulate all the tenure candidates. And what's really important is that they've gone through three or four years of a very rigorous process, you know, including observations, mentoring, yearly reviews, but really what's most important and what this board has charged myself with, and I know Deborah, you also, is having educators who are part of the community. And you heard that tonight over and over and over again, that all of these, all of these tenure candidates not only work hard and structurally day to day, but then they give of their talents outside of the school day, really mentoring and coaching and and cheering on our students. And that's a part of, I think, who we are as a community and what makes us so special too. So all the the tenure candidates tonight, after you are granted tenure by the board, I just want to say congratulations and you're becoming a part of an outstanding group of educators who serve the students at the Mayapac Central School District. So congratulations once again.
Congratulations and officially welcome to the family, as I like to say. At this time, we have the Mayapac Cares.
Yes. So so as you know, every year at this time, we acknowledge the students in the middle school who really go above and beyond with community service, helping one another out, helping throughout the school day and doing a variety of different things in the community, helping their fellow peers with homework and other things that go on from time to time. And I'd like to mention the following students and congratulate them for all their efforts this year during the twenty twenty one school year. Certificates are being mailed home to them, but I wanted to acknowledge them tonight. That Zoe Barrero, Kira Callahan, Emily Chin, Griffin Vennard, Emma Westcott, Irma Alman, Brian Margolis, Felix Cop, Kevin Feely, Leona Ademi, Aiden Camajo, Eileen Cotonio, Lucy Hernandez, Christopher Holloway, Oliver Prestula, Madison Romeo, Melanie Hox, Sydney Hughes, Aine McGregor, Samuel Grimm, Tisana Bandardi, Yin Chin, Stephanie Banavetis, Nicholas Erickson and Michael Smith. Congratulations to all of you for all your time and effort that you put in to making Mayapac Cares a a great group. And I'm sure you're going to do wonderful things as some of you head on to high school. So thank you again very, very much. Madam President, back to you.
Thank you very much. All the care. I do miss them this time of year. June is a lot more fun, but we'll make this do as best we can. At this time, I would like to have a motion for the acceptance of the warrants for June twenty twenty. Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Motion for the approval of the Treasurer's Report for April twenty twenty?
Motion.
So moved? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Motion for the approval of work session heading February tenth, twenty twenty? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the regular meeting for February thirteenth, twenty twenty?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Motion for the approval of special meeting minutes April second, twenty twenty? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to approve the work session meeting April fourteenth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve regular meeting April sixteenth, twenty twenty?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that. At this time, I turn it back over to our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I I just want to echo your sentiments and really thank the entire Mayapac community for your your positive vote on our twenty twenty one school budget. It's a, it's a, it's really, I think, important in these days to really continue the hard work that we've begun to do and the the resounding vote of confidence is is very humbling, I know for me, for the cabinet, for our leadership team, and especially for our our students and our teachers and staff here at Mayapac. So to the entire Mayapac community, thank you very, very much. And to the Board of Education, thank you. During the last number of months, this has not been easy. As we know, things seem to be changing from from week to week on the the actual budget process itself, the voting process and your your stalwart, sticking to it and and looking at the new dates and milestones and coming together to present a a budget that the community was able to support. I I thank you very, very, very much on my behalf. I also want to take this opportunity to thank our district clerk, Melody La Raca. The amount of work that went into pulling this budget vote off, changing from one day to the next, not having envelopes, being able to be sent out, having to go to a a different type of ballot system and being able to communicate that to the public, working on actually the setup of the vote itself and being very organized and being very transparent and and doing it in a manner that was I don't, I want to say really up to a standard that I don't think any other district has gone through. So I want to thank you, Ms. La Raca, and I also want to thank our Assistant Superintendent Sandra Clohesi because when we found out that we could not get these envelopes to school on time, she immediately got on the phone. She reached out. She was able to get to another vendor to be able to get it done in a relatively quick manner so that we could get those mailers out as soon as we got them out. So I want to thank her also. So again, thank you all for a very difficult process and thank the Mayapac community. On some really great notes, positive notes happening in the district than the last couple of weeks. Last week, we had our academic and athletic awards at the high school. Very well received and I congratulate all those recipients who got scholarships for their athletic prowess over their four years at Mayapac High School, as well as those who received academic awards over the course of the two nights that we celebrated last week. We started today with our moving up ceremonies. We did a drive up ceremony that Mister Cosacria and his team and his team A and B today, students pulled up in decorated cars, got out, took a nice photo. And it was very, very well received and it's the beginning of the next couple of days at Mayapac Middle School and celebrating our moving up class in the eighth grade for twenty twenty. Next week, as you know, on Monday night, the twenty second, we have our high school graduation at six thirty up at Mayapac High School and then we start Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, our grade five moving up ceremony. So there's a lot of great celebrations going on. I want to congratulate all the moving up classes and of course, the the class of twenty twenty at Mayapac High School. Very, very important. I also want to congratulate both Tanner, Ben and Mike for being selected to be on the board for the next three years. I look very much forward to our working together to to continue the path of what we've done from an instructional point of view, social emotional point of view as well as our facility. So congratulations to the three of you. I also want to take this opportunity to to thank two of our trustees that are going to be leaving the board. And first is Mark O'Connor. I've really gained a lot of respect for Mark and his passion for our students, his passion for sports, his passion for getting things done. And, you know, I I think our, my conversations with him, I know as the board, he's had a lot of great insights. He's worked really, really hard for what he feels is what's best for kids, not only inside the classroom, but outside the classroom. And I just wanted to thank Mark for his dedication and serving on the Board of Education. It was very much enjoyable for the, you know, the three years that I've been here. So thank you, Mark. And then last but not least, Madam President, for your your stalwartness over the last nine years, for coming in and 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 trying to really make things transparent, fighting for all students K to twelve, for all needs and making sure that they're met, being someone who, you know, shows their passion always, you know, at 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 times, you know, really makes the board and and myself look into things and make sure we're doing the best for all the kids, you know, and your dedication to the community over the last nine years is very, very, very much noted. I thank you very, very much for your confidence and the board's confidence, but especially you as the board president and allowing me to serve as superintendent of the Mayapac Central School District. So both of you will be missed. Leslie will be missed very, very much so. And thank you for all you've done for the community and and your stalwartness and your dedication to our students, our staff. It's it's very, very much appreciated.
Anthony, thank you very much. I do appreciate that and it's been my pleasure. Thank you and congratulations and best wishes to Mark as well.
Thank you.
Those are my comments, Madam President.
Thank you, Mister Superintendent. At this time, we have the Board of Education Committee reports. I believe we have one report this evening from trustee Savino.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Technology Committee met May twenty eighth, a virtual meeting with Doctor Stoll, Mister Tremblay, myself and trustee Kane. We reviewed the large number of tickets that were received and completed for at the help desk for Chromebook issues and so on and so forth in the district, as well as the number of MiFi units deployed for students that needed internet access to utilize their Chromebook. We discussed the fifth and ninth grade Chromebook refresh process for the coming school year, which is still on target as it has been in the past. We discussed the process and the next steps for the Smart Schools Bond Act. Targeted start date in a, for the work is July of twenty twenty one. We discussed the Windows ten migration to take place this summer and we closed out the meeting discussing some features with the website that we'll be looking into for user user functionality. We adjourned at seventeen fifteen hours and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Savino. At this time, we have our consent agenda. Before we approve the consent agenda, I would like to remove item D D, which is a Septo grant that I would really like to acknowledge at this time. So I would like to ask trustee O'Connor. Do you have the agenda up?
I don't have it in front of me. I apologize.
Okay, no, that's okay. All right, you're already checked out. Now I'm only teasing. Okay. Who would like to read the some D D for the Septo and just acknowledge that grant? Okay, well then I will happily do it. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education does hereby accept a grant from Septo in the amount of two thousand seven hundred fifty one dollars and fourteen cents for nine teacher mini grants. So thank you very much to Septo for their generosity and the continued generosity and support of our special needs students. So we truly appreciate that. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I do not believe district clerk, do we have any resident comments? That you would like to read for the board to address?
The comments that I had were that they, some of the community wanted to come in and share comments with the board, but I don't have particular direct comments from residents at this time.
Okay, so thank you very much for that clarification. I would like to reiterate that the public comment section, the public comment sections of the board meeting is for current residents to comment as matters of the public interest involving school. for current residents to comment as matters of the public interest involving school operations and programs. Usually, they are questions because of the new regulations with COVID. Questions can be submitted to the district clerk no later than 3:00 PM on the day of our public board meeting, and the board will read those questions out, but they must be questions, and answer them. So perhaps next month, you will have more questions. Okay. At this time, before we go, before we close, I would very much like to thank trustee Mark O'Connor for his dedication to the community and to the students. His logic and viewpoint and his passion have served the Mayapac community well. I extend my best wishes to Mark, and it's been an absolute privilege to work alongside him on the board for the better of the community, and it's been an honor to serve with you, Mark. So I want to thank you very much. Mark, if you would like to say a few words?
Well, I'm a little surprised that I didn't know that you were going to do that, and so I didn't have anything prepared. All I can say is thank you. Leslie, I called you over the years to sometimes complain, sometimes suggest, and you were the one that urged me to run for the board, and it was a fantastic experience. I think we did many, many good things together. I think a few years from now, when we have the district office moved to the fall school and there's a campus concept, and we get rid of the district office and some of the properties we're no longer using, and very proud that we sold that property in Seegor and put it back on the tax rolls, and I think that those ideas and many of the other positive ideas, and I can't wait to see Anthony driving around in his golf cart around the high school, middle school, fall school campus. It's going to be, with the capital improvements, a very, very great place to go to school and to work. And so I want to thank my fellow board members and the administration. We have some excellent administrators, fantastic teachers and coaches, and it's been an absolute pleasure. Most of all, the best students in the area. They're just, they are the best, so thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to better days and better things to come.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. I would like to take a moment to thank trustee Vice President Morgan for his support and passion and his dedication, working alongside me as vice president. He truly loves Mayapac and wants the best for Mayapac, and I trust he will continue to do so. So thank you, Mike. I would like to thank Superintendent ToCarlo for his support and leadership and for saying yes to Mayapac when we looked for the superintendent and the search, and bringing stability and the Mayapac way to Mayapac, and being visible is an understatement. But Anthony, you've been there and all over the place, and you really have shown your support to the students and the teachers and the community. So I would like to thank you so much and congratulate you on putting together a really terrific team and administrative team, and I know you will continue to do great things in the years ahead. I would like to also thank Melody LaRaca, our district clerk, who has just been an absolute godsend to the board as a district clerk, her professionalism, her poise, and she's always going the extra mile with a smile. I didn't mean for that to run, but it did. Melody, thank you. You've been really there for all of us on the board and as the superintendent, and we really couldn't do our jobs without you. You really are an unsung hero, and I just want to thank you so much for all that you I know that next year, there will be some, right now, the way things look in the world, there may be some financial hardships and some cultural changes, and I know there will be some challenges ahead, but I have the utmost confidence in this board and the superintendent, and they will not disappoint the community. I thank you again for allowing me to serve with all of you, and a heartfelt thank you for giving me the opportunity, and I will miss you, but I will be happy for the free time I will have now, and I just want to thank you all so much. So I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Madam.
I will be watching. Watch that budget and make sure you take care of the kids. So thank you all. I wish you all nothing but the best.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Supes, you've been great. Thank you, and you're a new team, and I wish you all the best, and we've come full circle, so I leave the district in great hands. Mark and I leave the community in great hands, and I know you'll rise up to all the challenges and all the expectations, without a doubt. So thank you very much.
I just want to say one thing real quick, if you don't mind. I just want to say, Leslie, I've been on the board with you quite a few years, and your leadership was instrumental in helping searches for superintendent and whatever was needed, you always pulled the board together and we got things done. So your leadership was definitely instrumental, and you'll very much be missed. Mark, again, I enjoyed working with you immensely. We did great things together, and I miss both you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mark, Madam Mark, I'd like to echo the same sentiments. Mark, I'm going to miss you. My brother, our wars, it was awesome. Madam, four years ago, you took a young board member and encouraged me to speak up and to take an active role on the school board as your vice president. I certainly appreciated the opportunity. I appreciated the passion and all the road trips that we took on the fact-finding and interviews and in our superintendent search, and it's just been, it's been a great, I appreciated your leadership very much and what you mean to this community. So thank you for your leadership and for your service on the school board on behalf of the board and the Mayapac community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike.
And thank you to our principals, who lead our schools and do the best they can. And Jen, you look younger and younger every year, and I don't know how the heck you do it, but I am hashtag jealous, okay?
Thank you. I'll take that.
So thank you, Anthony Gregg. Thank you for all you've done for special education. That was a passion of mine when I started to run, Lucy and I and other board members, and it really, we've come a long way. So thank you for that. I do really appreciate that. As a recipient, as a board member, and as a parent recipient of the programs you put in place, really do benefit our children. So thank you very much for that. Mr. Tremblay, thank you for all you're doing in curriculum and all of the new avenues and approaches you've been taking to bring us together and moving us up that ladder and move that number up so we're number one in the country, US, world, and news report. I expect us to be number one in a couple of years, okay?
You have to keep doing that, Madam President.
And Deborah, getting great people that love Mayapac and want to work for Mayapac. You've been doing a good job, and just keep going with that. And Sandra, thank you very much. Welcome to the team. Your passion and your dedication is totally noticed, and we thank you for all that you're doing, and we know you're going to keep the budget down, keep the numbers and the taxpayers happy, please, but don't neglect our students' needs. So anyway, I want to thank all the board members and everyone here. And Mr. Gilligan, good luck to you. Congratulations on this new endeavor. You're doing great. And Mr. Lawrence, take care of these high school students, make sure they get into the best colleges, and work on more grants for them, okay? All righty. Well, I'm ready to close this meeting. If anyone else has anything? If not, I would like to make a...
Madam, I just wanted to thank, I stopped in this morning and saw some of the people count, ballots, that the ballot counters this morning were, and yesterday were amazing. Melody, great job, and very, very much, it was a tough task, but the ballot counters did a great job in a first time ever. So I think really, congratulations to everybody that pulled off quite an unexpected task today. So thank you so much.
Yes, the new endeavor, yes, and I did thank the ballot counters today. And I told them, "Don't let anyone rush you. Get it right," but thank you for everything you're doing. And I did appreciate them today, and I gave them a shout out. So yes, thank you. Okay, well, I would like to make a motion to close.
Got to be Mark O'Connor.
Motion to close? So second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone. Good night and best wishes, and God bless. Okay, bye-bye.